Thanks over here. All right, we're now going to meet as committee the whole, so I'll call this meeting to order. Counsel, is there any declaration of interest, pecuniary or otherwise? Seeing none, once again, if one does come up during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to raise it at that time. We're on to item number three, three A is a notice of motion provided by councillor Mackie, which was dated January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. So with that said, oh, we should move probably, right? Scott, can I, sorry councillor Mackie, can I mark you as the mover here? And secondary is councillor Burley. So councillor Mackie, the floor is now yours.
Well, thank you very much, Warden, and congratulations Heather on your pending retirement. I'm not sure who's going to referee councillor Desai and councillor Mellon anymore, but I guess someone else will have to be up to that task. But anyways, it's my pleasure to bring this notice of motion forward this morning. This is actually a response to Warden Hicks' call to action in his inaugural address, where he, you know, asked county council to act boldly on this significant issue of mental health and addictions, you know, within our country and certainly within Gray County. So, Warden, I certainly applaud you for, you know, bringing this to the forefront. So this notice of motion is an opportunity for county council to embrace the warden's call for action and develop a task force specific to mental health and addictions. The task force would allow county council the opportunity to look at the strengths, opportunity, weaknesses that we have within our current mental health system and hopefully advance that. You know, this is a timely motion. Yesterday was Bell's Let's Talk campaign, and they set a new record for Canadian mental health with one hundred and sixty-four million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand some odd messages of support around mental health, and they raised an additional access of eight million dollars. So it's certainly an issue that we're all very aware of. I think it's time, you know, for Gray County to join in that conversation and around mental health and addictions to break down the stigma and to bring forward positive change. So with that being said, I think the the motion is pretty self-explanatory, and I would respectfully ask my colleagues for their support in developing this task force.
Thank you very much. Thank you councillor Mackie, and speakers to the motion. Councillor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, county council. I just want to congratulate councillor Mackie for bringing this forward. I think it's a, it's very important, and we get this ball rolling. I'd be happy to put my name on that task force, and I look forward to it. Thanks, Mr. Warden.
Good, thank you, sir. Councillor Soever, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and certainly, mental health is a very important part, and substance abuse is a very important issue for the county. In fact, our community safety and well-being plan, which we'll hear a presentation on later today, identified substance abuse as the number one, or mental health as the number one, and substance abuse as number two, I believe. And so, you know, I think it is very important that we address these items, and I think the task force is a great idea. I'm just wondering, how does this work within the framework of our community safety and well-being plan?
I don't know if we turn to Barb Fady or perhaps Kim.
Yeah, good morning. Um, thank you for that, for that question. And I think certainly, there's been a foundational work done from a number of groups, our community safety and well-being plan, absolutely. We, the Poverty Task Force and the Alcohol and Drug Strategy, all of those different efforts, I think, have uncovered aspects of this. And I think through the work of this task force, we want to build on the aspects that focus on on mental health and the service provision, either opportunities or challenges that have been uncovered through that work. So I see those other projects as really being significant contributors to the work of this task force, which is meant to deliver on some key initiatives in a relatively short period of time. So we're actually, I think, fortunate to have had a good, solid base to work from.
Barb, anything you want to add there?
Through you, Mr. Warden, our CAO's comments are exactly bang on. We know there's been lots of good work go on. This community safety and well-being plan is the infrastructure that draws the pieces together, and it helps us to ensure that we can take information forward to the province, to the federal level. We know that we're not alone. Gray Bruce is not alone in our prioritizing of these needs. It's provincial, it's federal, it's international. There's so much happening, and it is not a coincidence that I think there was so much attention paid yesterday to Bell's Day. And we know we have to do something more than we've been doing. It's not that we haven't been doing, and we haven't been getting traction. We have, there's just so much to do. It's a very big, significant challenge for all of our communities.
Thank you, Barb. Next is councillor Keating.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and good morning, county council. And I just wanted to add my appreciation to councillor Mackie for bringing this motion forward and to let council know that in the municipality of Newford, we lost four lives far too soon in the past week. That has really impacted our community in a big way. So this motion is very timely. Those lives could have all benefited from from these types of supports. So I'm very grateful, you councillor Mackie, for bringing this forward and forward to the rep.
Thank you very much. Councillor Soever, I see your hand again.
I had a follow-up.
I apologize if I didn't check back in with you. Go right ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, and I want to thank CEO in growth for a response. And and I think, you know, it is important that we keep up with the work and integrate this somehow with the community safety and well-being plan, and particularly Section Seven, which is entitled "Moving Forward Together", and it is, I quote from Section Seven, "Throughout the planning process, the Bruce and Gray Community Safety and Well-Being Plan Advisory Committee and Coordinator have remained connected with our border counties of Huron, Wellington, Dufferin, Simcoe, and the planning underway in those regions. Once their plans are developed and those communities begin to take action, this collaboration will be even more important as residents living in Huron, Kinlaw, South Bruce, West Gray, Southgate, Gray Highlands, and the town of Blue Mountains cross borders and may receive services and supports outside of Bruce and Gray." So I think, you know, what I'm just asking is perhaps we could remember that when we write the terms of reference of this committee is that, you know, we don't, we do recognize that those border communities, you know, there is cross-border issues as well. I mean, I would say that most of our drug supply does not originate in the town of Blue Mountains, but does cross borders mostly from the the south and and east. So, you know, I think, and there are important supports in those areas as well, as well as our OPP, their mental health officers receive considerable support from the Collingwood General Marine Hospital, which is a very important support when it comes to dealing with mental health and addiction issues in our, in our community.
Point well made, councillor Soever. Let's see, stop nodding your heads. Councillor Desai, you're next.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. And I want to thank councillor Mackie for bringing this forward. I have, having sat with councillor Mackie on the seat as a task force for three years, I can attest firsthand to his passion for for the topic. One thing that I do like about the motion is under the considerations of the task force, not only does it talk about reaching out to or advocating at all levels of government, which I'm hoping means lower tier and upper tier, as well as provincial and federal, but it also does talk about a local response. Right here at home in Gray County, since the pandemic started, we've lost more lives to to addiction issues than we have to to COVID- nineteen. So we've always been living in a, in that addiction issues epidemic. So a very timely motion. And I do hope that as a council, as a level of government, we're willing to go beyond this and take bold steps such as including, not steps necessarily, but even considerations such as safe injection sites and so on. I know these are tough issues, tough conversations, but I do hope that as as a level of government, regardless of what term of council it is, we, these are conversations we are able to have in a very open, transparent, and a very frank manner. Quite frankly, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Desai. Councillor Bordignan, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to the council. I see in point three under the task force, it will consider appropriate advocacy, and that includes funding. I chair the grants and donations committee at the town, where we receive, we raise money at grassroots levels as opposed to going through taxation and giving it back to local groups, some in mental health, some in regards to addiction. And as the, our mayor said, we straddle both counties, so we're in Simcoe and we're in Gray, as far down as even Concord, and people have asked us between shelters and things like that. So from a fiscal point of view, will the task force be looking at each of the municipalities as well as the upper tier of Gray County, looking for funding for this? You know, good thoughts, good discussions, great, but at the end of the day, things have to be paid for. So at what point, what what is the funding model that the task force will be looking at? I assume it will be from municipalities as well as the county. That's just a question for the mover.
I'm going to turn it over to the CAO.
Thank you for that question. I think one of the tasks that we need to undertake at this table is to really understand the funding model that exists right now. Who is responsible for what? How are they being resourced to undertake their responsibilities? What, in their opinion, is is working well? Where are their gaps? Where are their opportunities? I think it's very, it would be very difficult for us at this time to give a definitive answer about what's required or what would be best, or whether or not there's really a role for the county in in providing direct funding. Much of the the mental health support comes to places like CMHA and GBHS through the province. And I think we want to, first of all, listen to the people who are tasked with delivering those responsibilities and understand, and then maybe there's a conversation to happen with the with the province. So hopefully, we can, we can consider everybody's role in all of this and bring back in the report a good summary for everyone's understanding.
Thank you. Anything else, councillor Bordignan?
No, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Councillor Patterson, you're next.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Good morning, county council. I just wanted to share that last year at this time, at the Alpha Symposium, which is the Association of Local Public Health Agencies, the Gray Bruce Health Unit brought forward a resolution so that, once this pandemic is over, the same efforts that are being used right now with the pandemic will be turned over to the opioid crisis. So public health is on board and would be more than willing to be a partner in this. Thank you.
Very good, and should be a partner. Anyone else? Then I'll turn it back to councillor Mackie. Anything else you want to add, sir?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I certainly appreciate the kind comments of my council colleagues, and I would ask for a recorded vote, please.
Very good. I don't see any other hands, so with that said, I'll turn it over to Madam Clerk.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Okay, councillor Mackie.
In favor?
Councillor Gamble.
In favor.
Councillor Burley.
In favor.
Councillor Carlton.
In favor.
Councillor McQueen.
Favor.
Councillor Desai.
In favor.
Councillor Patterson.
In favor.
Warden Hicks.
Yay.
Councillor Clumpus.
In favor.
Councillor Keveney.
In favor.
Councillor Boddy.
In favor.
Councillor O'Leary.
In favor.
Councillor Woodbury.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yay.
Councillor Soever.
In favor.
Councillor Bordignan.
In favor.
Councillor Robinson.
In favor.
Councillor Hutchinson.
In favor.
Notice of motion is supported unanimously.
Thank you very much for that. I just muted myself. So, thank you, congratulations councillor Mackie. We'll turn next to our delegations, starting with Tanya Roberts, who is going to talk to us about our community safety and well-being plan. She's the coordinator. Somebody going to do an introduction? Barb, perhaps you?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, welcome to Tanya Roberts, and it's my pleasure today to introduce her as our second coordinator, facilitator for community safety and well-being. You'll have met Sarah in the past, and now Tanya is taking over for her. She came on board last spring, and we are very fortunate to have her leadership with us. She is working with the county of Bruce, so she is housed at the county of Bruce, but of course, all of her work is remote. And so Tanya is going to run through a little brief overview or history for those of you who haven't been with us on the journey, but then speak to some of the achievements from the past year, as well as where we're going. And again, I really appreciate the comments made earlier about the reference to the work that's happening for the task force and how it connects back to existing committees and structures that are in place with, it takes a multiple-sector approach, that village piece that we've talked about, and and you're going to see some of that reflected in the presentation. So thank you.
All right, thanks very much, Barb. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, good morning, everybody. My name is Tanya Roberts, and as Barb mentioned, I am the Community Safety and Well-Being Planning Coordinator for both Bruce and Gray Counties. So I'm just going to share my screen here. Can everybody see this?
No, not yet. Just while you're getting things, oh, there it comes. While you're getting things together for the public watching, if you go to the website under the council agenda, you will find a PowerPoint presentation there as well.
Okay. Now can everybody see that?
Yes.
Perfect, so. Thank you again for having me here to talk about community safety, well-being planning. So here's a brief overview of what I'll be discussing today in today's presentation. So to provide some background context, the regional municipalities of Bruce and Gray Counties have been working with their community partners since October two thousand and nineteen towards the development of a community safety and well-being plan, which is mandated under legislation under the Police Services Act. The Ministry of the Solicitor General has provided a framework to help municipalities as they undertake the community safety and well-being planning process. The community safety and well-being planning framework is a strategy for crime prevention. It promotes a collaborative roadmap for working together through an integrated approach to service delivery and utilizes evidence-based strategies and programs to address crime and complex social issues. The overall aim of community safety and well-being planning is to increase social development and preventative solutions, or what we refer to as upstream intervention, and reduce demand on emergency and crisis-driven services, or what we call downstream intervention. So what is social development, which this framework references and then takes inspiration from? So social development requires long-term, multi-disciplinary efforts and investments to improve the social determinants of health, and thereby reduce the probability of harm and victimization. Social development is where a wide range of sectors, agencies, and organizations bring different perspectives and expertise to the table to address complex social issues like poverty from every different angle. And we know there's many angles. So social development relies on planning and establishing multi-sectoral partnerships. And to work effectively in this area, all sectors need to share their long-term planning and performance data so they have a common understanding of local and systemic issues. Strategies need to be bolstered or put into place to target the root causes of these issues. Communities that invest heavily in social development by establishing protective factors, through improvement in things like health, employment, and graduation rates, will experience the social benefits of addressing the root causes of crime and social disorder. The key to successful social development initiatives is working together in ways that challenge conventional assumptions about institutional boundaries and organizational culture, with the goal of ensuring that individuals, families, and communities are safe, healthy, educated, have housing, employment, and social networks that they can rely on. Social development in action will be realized when all community members are aware of services available to them and can access those resources with ease. Knowing who to contact and when to contact them allows communities to operate in an environment where the response matches those needs. So here's an example in kind of some of what those social determinants include. And here's a great visual of the beauty and diversity in the region. And here's a list of the seventy-two planning members, I believe, over seventy-two members now, at the community safety, well-being advisory committee level, which is very impressive. So the goals and purpose of community safety, well-being are to achieve the ideal state of a sustainable community where everyone is safe, has a sense of belonging, opportunities to participate, access to services, and where individuals can meet their needs for education, healthcare, food, housing, income, and social and cultural expression. So the roles and responsibilities at the regional level is that Bruce County and Gray County will facilitate the process for regional initiatives or strategies supported by the local municipalities as per the municipal agreement. And at the local level, additionally, the role of the Bruce and Gray municipalities shall be to support any initiatives, programs, tasks, or projects at the local level as identified in the action plans, which I'll be discussing soon. So as mentioned earlier, the community safety, well-being next steps are to establish a working group with those border partners along the Bruce and Gray Counties to align that work of their plans and keep connections and shared services. And we did make a submission to the Ministry of the Solicitor General on July first. The Coronova Virus Support and Protection Act enabled the Solicitor General to prescribe a new deadline for the completion and adoption of these plans past the original deadline of January first, two thousand and twenty-one. And our plan was approved and made public in December two thousand and twenty, so well ahead of that. And the new deadline to submit to the Solicitor General was July first, which we did, were able to submit on that deadline. So a quick snapshot of achievements in two thousand and twenty-one. We have an indicator report that was released, and hopefully, we're all able to take a look at. And we've created a framework around those indicators. We'll be having reports soon released on the Second Community Perception Survey. We've identified community safety, well-being, planning action tables, and we've relaunched the Gray Bruce Situation Table for Acute Risk, what we call STAR, as well as established a municipal working group. So for Phase Two implementation, the community, as I've mentioned, we've just entered the Phase Two Plan Implementation Process, which includes a relaunch of the Gray Bruce Situation Table for Acute Risk, the identification of community safety, well-being, planning action tables, an indicator report and evaluation framework, results from the Second Community Perception Survey, and the establishment of a working group with those municipal representatives. And on July sixth, we relaunched the Gray Bruce Situation Table for Acute Risk, again, what we call STAR. And STAR is governed by the Community Safety, Well-Being Advisory Committee and chaired by the Community Safety, Well-Being Coordinators, by myself. And the Situation Table meets on a weekly basis. So what is a Situation Table? It's a disciplined meeting process and highly structured collaboration among human service providers, where participants work together to reduce the chances that anyone in the community will experience harms from a combination of risk factors that heighten the chances of imminent victimization. The Gray Bruce Situation Table plays a critical role in connecting individuals and families who are at acutely elevated risk with services and supports they need to survive and thrive. The Situation Table is a collaborative of the municipalities of Bruce and Gray, police services, and social services, and community-based organizations that identify and support individuals as an acutely elevated risk of harm, committing an offense or coming in contact with the police or other crisis-driven services. So in summary, it is a strategic alliance of human services, guided by common principles and processes to mitigate risk situations in a timely matter, so ideally within twenty-four or forty-eight hours. And the table will collect risk-based data through a risk-tracking database, which is a tool that can be used by communities to collect information about local priorities, risks, vulnerable groups, and protective factors, and evolving trends to help inform that community safety and well-being planning process. So some stats from the, from the table's relaunch in July, we had from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty, meetings were held on an ad hoc basis, and there were seventeen situations filtered through the STAR process over that five-year period. And in two thousand and twenty-one, and since July sixth, between that period and the end of December in two thousand and twenty-one, we had weekly meetings, and there were nine situations filtered through that STAR process. And of those nine situations, the referring organizations were, in five of those cases, South Bruce OPP. For two of those, Gray Bruce OPP. We had Rest Gray Police Services for one of those, and also Sohac for one. And the organizations taking the lead response in those situations were CMHA, Gray Bruce Health Services, YMCA, and Keystone. And during the community safety, well-being plan development phase, an assessment tool was created to help identify already existing action tables as strong fits to become community safety, well-being action tables. Action tables have been confirmed for the risk priority areas of addictions and substance use, poverty and income, and housing and homelessness. An action table for mental health is currently under investigation, and a terms of reference has been created for an action table on crime prevention, and a recruitment process is currently underway. So on the indicator report, which was released, the framework, as mentioned, has been established to then identify service and systems gaps and track progress over time. The indicators show that addictions and substance misuse are a major cause of increasing morbidity and mortality in the region, and survey respondents felt that crime had increased in the past three years in their community, and many felt that police play an important role in community safety. So as mentioned, a community perception survey was originally launched in two thousand and twenty during the community safety and well-being plan development stage. The purpose of the survey was to consult with and better understand the public on the current state of well-being and feelings of safety in the people of the Bruce and Gray region. A second follow-up survey was launched on April first, two thousand and twenty-one, and closed on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, to identify if and how the COVID- nineteen global pandemic may have impacted community perceptions of safety and well-being. And eight hundred and sixty-one surveys were submitted. So this chart here shows the overall top five risk areas ranked in order of importance. So as you can see, mental health is rated number one. Number two is addictions and substance misuse. Number three, crime prevention. Number four is housing and homelessness, and number five is poverty and income. So those five core priorities maintained. So those five core priorities maintained. And this chart here shows a comparison of the average ranking of importance between Bruce County and Gray County in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty one. And the only significant change here is that in two thousand twenty, addictions and substance use ranked highest number one overall in the Bruce and Gray Community Safety Wellbeing Planning Engagement Survey. Whereas in two thousand twenty one, that was mental health was the number one overall. And this chart shows a comparison of the average ranking of importance between Bruce County and Gray County. Overall, mental health, housing and homelessness and poverty and income ranked higher in level of importance in Gray County than in Bruce County. Whereas community belonging and neighborhood environment, crime prevention, emotional violence, bullying and harassment, education, employment and physical health ranked higher in level of importance in Bruce County than in Gray County. And healthy child development and addiction substance use were the most similar by comparison. And a full report summarizing this is expected to be released at the end of February. So as, again, as mentioned, the Community Safety Wellbeing Plan Municipal Representatives Working Group and Community of Practice has been established for local level plan implementation and actions. So that's a really important working group and this will include the creation of an assessment tool to support municipalities and organizations identify opportunities for those upstream solutions through social development. And what's next? So as we move forward with plan implementation, some of the next steps involve the development of actions, action plans for each of those action tables. We will also continue to map out community assets, including organizational mapping and services by category. A new communications plan is currently underway and will include a community safety, wellbeing, planning, brand, identity logo and updated website. And I just want to thank you all for your leadership and acknowledging the importance of community safety and wellbeing planning in Gray County. Thank you very much and I will now open the floor to questions.
Thank you very much. What an update, Tanya. And it's so timely. It's almost like you planned this visit. Given the discussion and vote that we just had.
I can't take credit for that. I guess it did work, work well, alignment.
Yes, and as you know, we also just had a delegation with Bruce County with the Solicitor General on our safety and wellbeing plan. I don't know, Kim, if you want to add anything here before we open it up for questions, but that was very timely as well. Okay, all right. So I will open up for questions, starting with councillor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Tanya, for the report. Very, very extensive. My question is, there is Ontario Health Teams being developed currently in both Gray and Bruce. I'm wondering, is there a role for them in this process? When they get up and running?
Yes, certainly. So that was one of the earlier conversations around the mental health action table. And it looks like other developments are underway around. Obviously, everybody recognized the importance of mental health challenges and their impacts on all of these core priority risk areas. So that certainly was in the conversation at the time. They weren't approved yet, so it was very early discussions, but I think now that they are, that will inform this mental health action table and that action table planning process going forward. But I'll also open it up to Barb Fady, who might have a little bit more background on that.
They're going to be very key. Thank you for that, councillor Millen. There, this is a health concern. Obviously, there's lots going on in this Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, but it, they, it's tied, of course, to those pillars of, of that, that are so interconnected. It's very hard to extract what, what starts and ends. And so we do believe they are a key piece for us. And of course, we would be looking at our bordering communities, knowing that those, those boundaries will include the connections that need to be made to ensure that populations along the boundaries of Gray County and Bruce Counties are served equally as well.
I would just add that I think this is pertinent to the discussion that some of us participated in at Roma earlier this week and the and the role for municipalities to have at the OHT planning table. Really, I think it's, it really, I think emphasizes the importance of having a municipal voice at that table that can bring the importance of some of these issues to bear in the conversations at the OHT. So, because it has such a significant impact on the other aspects of our operations and as Barb just said, it's all health related. So hopefully, you know, it can all come together.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. And councillors Robinson and Hutchison were present for the delegation. I want to thank them for taking the time to be present to that delegation. And so maybe collectively you can help me. My recollection of the comment from the minister with respect to funding, because it's one thing to have a plan and another to have the funding to actually operationalize properly these plans. My recollection is that she talked about funding flow through police services, police service boards, perhaps?
If I may, yes, that was my understanding as well, that while I'm not familiar with it, my understanding is that there is funding available to police services through Solicitor General to take on specific projects in a community. And that it's very important to Solicitor General when evaluating potential projects that there's a clear tie back to the findings and recommendations of community safety and wellbeing plans.
Anyone else with questions? Then, Tanya, I turn it back to you. Is there any final comments that you have?
Yeah, just to echo the importance, as Kim mentioned earlier, around those action tables, like we identified three already existing tables that were already working, poverty task force, drug and alcohol strategy, the housing and homelessness work being done. So we really are leveraging that already good work. But realize that that collaborative governance piece is really important and kind of leveraging that collective intelligence that exists in the regions. So just want to echo just again, that leadership and acknowledging how important that is and really solving the root causes of these issues. So appreciate your time allowing me to present today. And I'm not sure if Barb has anything else to add to that kind of zoom through. I think I still went a bit over time there, but that's all for me.
Very good. You should also note, Tanya, I believe that there was certainly acknowledgement of the, the collaboration certainly between two counties. And also seventy plus partners dedicated to community safety and wellbeing. So that was certainly acknowledged.
Yes.
Thank you again.
Thank you for having me. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.
You too, provide. Okay, so we'll turn next to Rob Peacock. He's from, and John Leckie, Chair of the Meford Hospital Foundation. And they're going to be giving us an update about what's going on with the Meford Hospital Foundation. And again, for the viewing public, their PowerPoint presentation is attached to the agenda and the package that you will find on their calendar, county's website. So, Rob and John? Somebody doing an introduction?
Okay. Should I just jump in?
Yes, good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time this morning and for your support in, over the past years. Before I introduce Rob, who's our new CEO and professional philanthropist who's helping us change our direction, I thought I'd put my nine years on the board that's coming to a turn man in June. I thought I'd try and put it in some context and, and to be candid, over that period of time, I felt kind of nervous about the sustainability of Meford Hospital. And we would, I think I, perhaps Mayor Barb Columbus, who's overseen this for a while as well, would feel somewhat sane in that we would kind of imagine that if we happen to have a perfect storm of an economic downturn combined with Queens Park thinking there might be some ways to save money and the area of healthcare that our very existence might, might be exposed. So we had a tendency, to be candid, to kind of squirrel away money. So we would, we would raise funds for the harbor run and so on and so forth. Come around to you folks and the municipalities and plead for money and then squirrel it away. I'm happy to say that near the end of my tenure here, that whole feeling has changed a hundred and eighty degrees. And it's for a couple of reasons. The CEO, Gary Sims, who probably most of you are familiar with, has shown very dynamic leadership and has actually encouraged us to get out the paintbrush and that it's okay to spend some money on maintenance and so on. And, and that has been, that has changed the tone. In addition to that, ironically, COVID has kind of changed the mood because if anything, we've all learned, it's not a bad idea to have several key spots for business recovery purposes in, in the event of a pandemic. So that's given us new lease on life. Furthermore, we've had new significant generous donations come in. And Rob will be speaking to this in terms of the cataract suite. And, and that is created sort of a specialty area. So that in turn, all of this adds up to a lot more sustainability. However, paradoxically, as with our whole region where we live, success and demographic growth, rapid growth has, success actually causes the need for even more capital. And, and that's, that's kind of where we are now and, and kind of why we're here today. So Rob will be speaking to that. And then just one more parting comment, and I hesitate to even raise it because it can easily get quagmured. But along with the capital equipment comes primary care and, and the need to bring in doctors, nurses and so on. What we are missing in our catchment, which isn't clearly defined, admittedly, probably include Gray Highlands, Town of Blue Mountains and, and, and Meford, of course. Our catchment, our catchment doesn't have a family health team. Doctors are schooled to work in teams and we don't have one. So there is a need there. And there's also, of course, all of you would be fully aware of this, for attainable housing. And our cost of housing has gone through the roof. So those two things, as I say, could quagmire us in our discussion this morning. So we won't get in too deep to it, but, but I was pleased to hear from Mayor Alar Soever that he had some good discussions at Roma. And I'm hoping that someday we'll, we'll be hearing about those and they'll turn into some results on these subjects. So with that, I'll pass the baton over to Rob Peacock.
Thank you very much, John, and good morning, everybody. Mr. Warden, your worships and all councillors, it's a, it's a distinct pleasure to be here today and it's been a distinct pleasure over the course of the last nine months to be associated with the Meford Hospital Foundation, which actually almost exclusively serves Gray County. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. I'm going to ask, I think, Terry, you were going to put the slides up. And if we just move to slide five, where the table, or slide four, where the table of contents is. Yeah. Perfect. So I just wanted to say this morning very quickly, wanted to thank everybody. Talk a little bit about the hospital, the challenge, making a difference, sharing our vision and how your support in the past has made a significant difference in, over the years. And take it from there. So, next slide, please. Thank you. As mentioned, a big thank you. The County of Gray has, in fact, over many, many years, not as much as of late, provided north of two hundred thousand dollars to the Hospital Foundation to, to help the community overall. Next slide. And I'll go fairly quickly because you've got these all, but it's just to make some quick highlights per se. And so you, you're well, well aware, we have six hospitals within the Gray Bruce area, but quite frankly, we're talking about, you know, Meford Hospital itself this morning. And as John's kind of already mentioned, we service the municipality of Meford, the Town of Blue Mountains primarily in the northeast portion of the district of Gray County. But we're here to service everybody because ER takes in, and next slide, please. ER takes in a number of patients. And what's interesting about some of the stats, I put both the Meford Hospital, but also the Gray Bruce County ones in play. And, you know, the number of patients that are served, but also the number of lab procedures. We're, we're closing in on five hundred thousand lab procedures just in our hospital itself. And the average age of a patient is seventy four, the average age of an ER patient is fifty two. I'm going to go to the next slide. So what's the challenge? Well, the bottom line is, you know, our foundation, like all those in many hospitals, is primarily responsible for the capitalization of the corporation. What's that mean? We need to raise money that's not paid for by the province of Ontario so that we've got the best from, whether it's blood pressure cuffs or diagnostic imaging equipment at, at any point, at any rate. This, I think, a lot of people somewhat understand, but not completely. And increasingly, medical equipment is more expensive. And the technology is changing and it's for better patient care, but it is a financial responsibility. And we take it seriously, as we know you have, as being a supporter. Let's go to our next slide. So essentially, we're trying to make a difference by raising funds. And this year, we're closing in on two million dollars worth of monies raised with the foundation. And essentially, we're, you know, like I say, the financial arm for the capitalization of the corporation. Next slide. So I'm going to move, you know, we've, we've had some support in the past for our MRI and so forth. But I'm going to move to the next slide and talking a little bit about our vision. So our vision, and this is a bit of a double play, Antandra, is really cat, if you will, promoted with the recent support for the cataract surgery suite at Meford Hospital. Meford Hospital is here to stay and grow and will continue to do so. And this outstanding state of the art equipment will actually reduce wait times and improve outcomes. But interestingly, it'll have future opportunities to spread out from ophthalmology into other disciplines because of the unique nature of the equipment that's actually going to be installed. It should be there and done by the end of March. And we will be seeing patients for nearsightedness, farsightedness and anti, you know, stigma and so forth. So we're quite excited about that. And it's a new part, a new chapter for, for Meford. Next slide. So what we're proposing to try today is seek Gray County's support for a pledge commitment totaling two hundred and fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars per year over a five year period. And why? Well, I mentioned earlier some of the stats, but really it's, it's fundamental. Eighty seven point five percent of the hospital patient base comes from Gray County. And that is a significant relationship. We are Gray. Gray is, in fact, Meford Hospital in many, many ways. Next slide. So just wanted to let you know, we've had some transition on our board and we're going to, in fact, have new board members also coming on with our annual general meeting coming up in June. And this is the leadership that in fact helps steer our mighty foundation here in Meford. I want to thank you very much just for those broad brush kind of overviewing comments about the foundation and about the hospital and about you and your leadership. And we thank you once again. Well, John and I open it up for questions. Well, John and I open it up for questions from anybody on any of the subjects. Thank you, Tara, for doing the slides. Very much appreciated.
Well, thank you very much, Rob, and thank you very much, John, for that presentation. I have to tell you, I was able to attend the hospital foundation's annual general meeting in 2019, no, 2019. And I was so moved by how much people seem to really care about your hospital. It was a very moving experience this year. So I'll turn things over for questions. Anyone with questions? Do not see, oh, Councilor Columbus, go right ahead.
Thanks very much, Mr. Warden. And thank you to our presenters, John and Rob, good to see you this morning. It isn't a question, it's just a comment about the meaningful relationship that we as a municipality enjoy with the Meaford Hospital Foundation, supporting specifically Meaford Hospital. This has been going on for many, many years and we are aware of the fact that we are the largest single donor to the Meaford Hospital Foundation funding campaign over the years. We value this. This is a testament to the significance of the workings of the foundation and the sustainability of our hospital. That and our access to primary healthcare is significant to the sustainable of our municipality. In fact, to the attraction of new residents coming in. This is a very, very important role that the foundation plays in our community. We are significant partners in this and appreciate the relationship that we have formed over those years. And we look forward to continuing our efforts in supporting a family health team in our area that is ongoing and that we've been working on now with, for several years with members of the foundation. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. And we'll just keep on tracking.
Barb, if I could just expound for one moment, Mr. Chair, on this. It's not only the financial support that Barb and others with Meaford have provided as the number one donor for the Meaford Hospital over many decades. It's also, you know, your leadership as well behind the scenes on so many different opportunities that have been explored, are being explored, will continue to be explored. And so we very much appreciate that and thank you.
Good. Next is Councilor Boarding Non.
I thank you, Mr. Warden, through you and John and Rob, thanks again for the presentation, obviously. You know, Rob, I go back to always look back to fiscal. So, you know, at the end of the day, there's a price tag attached to everything. So I think we need to look at its totality as a council, based on the percentage of monies through Gray County that come back into the hospital system. You know, at the local level, we do our best to support, you know, two hospitals because we straddle both counties. And as John always said, you know, your geographical borders don't always represent your your catchment area borders, especially when it comes to hospital emergency services. So I think we need to look as a council on how much money we flow back to the hospitals throughout the county region in its totality. And I think that's important. So at the end of the day, you know, with your cataract and your surgery unit, we need to take a look at fiscal support, what we could do at the upper tier level as well as municipal level.
You, Councilor Soever, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I want to thank the presenters for their presentation. About two years ago now, I did spend some time in that fine hospital, a couple of weeks while waiting for my heart surgery. So, and I can truly say that the service there is amazing. But since I was bored, I did tour around the hospital and as is my custom, asked a lot of questions. And certainly, you know, the structure seems found that the hospital is there, it's a great asset. And, but there is a shortage of funding. Imagine my surprise when I went, I was directed to the shower room and I went in the wrong door and it was a former shower, which had now been drywalled over because of plumbing issues that couldn't be fixed. And when I realized that, when I got into the right room, which was just behind the wall, I realized that, wait a minute, the plumbing has to be in that wall. And certainly, this could not be a very expensive fix to open up the wall that was drywalled over and tap into the plumbing that is working. So anyway, it does need a lot of work in places, but the structure is sound. And I did tour around and I noticed there were rooms that weren't being utilized. Formerly, there were far more beds available there. And particularly in this day of pandemics and COVID, while we're setting up temporary hospitals and arenas, it might be a really good idea to keep the funding flowing to Meaford because my understanding was they could easily accommodate 25 or 30 more beds if they just had the funding to, you know, put beds in these rooms that are now being used to store old wheelchairs and other stuff that's long past its due date. So, you know, it is a very important hospital for this part of the community. It serves not only, we've heard, Meaford and Town of Blue Mountains, but also it's the closest hospital to Gray Highlands. And I remember going there a few times when I was a youngster for stitches. More recently, I took a great uncle who drove one of my grand nephews there for a few stitches. And it is the closest emergency hospital. So it does serve a very important need in our community. So I wholeheartedly support this request. Thank you.
Just wanted to comment on one thing. I know in the latest COVID, like there generally are, you know, 15 to 17 patients at the Meaford Hospital. But when the COVID break back in the spring of last year took place, we were north of 30 people. And we had to set up, you know, one of the big hallways. And we were able to do it. Challenge wasn't, in fact, doing that and dropping in computer lines and phone lines and setting up beds, not a problem. The challenge was staffing because of COVID and so forth. And it's ever so more a challenge right now. But yes, that hospital is ready and poised not only to grow, but also grow with the pace of growth within the entire overall community, as we know. So thank you for those comments, Alar. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So just to remind council of our recently adopted healthcare funding policy. The county is, as part of that policy and included in the 2022 budget that we'll be considering on Friday, the county puts away three quarters of 1% of our own source revenue to be made available to fund healthcare-related capital projects. So there certainly are, there are resources being put away to support projects like this. The timelines, as per our policy, are that anything received between January and June of any given year, all of those asks are brought together for consideration to the budget for the following year. So under the policy as it exists right now, this ask would be included to commence in the 2023 budget and forward from there.
Okay, Councilor Boarding Non.
Thank you for that sale and growth. It's my understanding that we don't have, Gray County doesn't have a policy for funding decisions or outside of the contribution of the initial healthcare reserves initiative. Is that correct?
And maybe I'm not understanding you, Councilor Boarding Non. Can you help me? What's your question?
What is our policy? And from what I've read through the funding through the MRI contributions back, I'm going back to 2019. Funding decisions where the request exceeds the contribution through the healthcare initiatives reserve, we don't have a policy. Is that correct?
We, council recently adopted a new healthcare funding policy at three quarters of 1%, which is will be close to half a million dollars a year that we put away. So if there are significant contributions above and beyond what that reserve would accommodate, I think we would have to have a different conversation at this council. But that's kind of the money that we're working with right now. Am I answering you appropriately?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I guess the, anything over and above that, I'm aware of the policy through the warden. I'm just thinking that we may have to take a look at increasing that based on, you know, when I look at, we have the opportunity to look at Simple County as well as their contribution, say, to the Collingwood Hospital, Gray County to their hospitals. And I think we're lacking behind there, especially in healthcare in that regard. Because that's not a lot of money, like I said, in the totality of the hospitals we do have in the region and the initiatives with the new hospital and what's needed to the upgrades of the other hospitals. So I just think that's something we've looked, at the end of the day, it all comes down to money, it all comes down to funding. So we need to take a look at that model, I think. Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Warden, we did, as part of the report that came to council, there were some follow-ups that were required. And with Heather's able to help, we made sure that all of that communication took place. I did hear back from Collingwood General and Marine and CEO Holder there. The threshold for capital projects is, as said in the policy, was 20% of the patients receiving inpatient services at the hospital was the threshold. This is similar to what the threshold at Simple County has provided in their policy. And so CEO Holder did let me know that while Collingwood hasn't yet achieved that threshold, they will advise us when that day comes in, then we can include them in our future work.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And so with that said, thank you, John, and thank you, Rob, for this presentation today. And we're well aware that it will be considered for, I guess, the 2023 budget.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a fabulous day. We appreciate your attendance.
Thank you for your time. Okay, folks, I think it's time for a break. Just let me see, I know I could probably use one. So why don't we, it is now, I have 11:19. Why don't we come back at 11:30? Would that be good with everyone? So 11:30 will continue. Remind you to just shut off your video and sound. I'll see you here at 11:30 sharp. Okay, so how are we doing?
Yep, we do have quorum now, Mr. Warden.
Okay, if that's the case, then we'll we'll get started. That break felt very short. Consent agenda now or council? Is there anything that needs to be uh pulled from the consent agenda, council or so ever?
Yes, Mr. Warden, I'd like to pull um items. One, I think it's just let me look here, it's um. One B.
Name six.
Uh, which is the purchasing report, when see the Affordable Housing Task Force minutes, please?
B and C, so that would be six, B and C. Okay, anything else from anyone? If that's the case, then I will deal with the consent agenda, or this be which is being moved uh by Councilor Carlton and seconded by Counselor Woodburn. So everything except B and C. Anyone opposed to that? I'm seeing none. That is carried. Thank you very much. I'm going to move on to item seven A. Which is the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy Update. It's been presented by Barb Fady. It's moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Barb, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. Um, so today I am bringing forward a report. If you recall, back in July, it seems like a long time ago now. Um, we had a delegation attend County Council and in that delegation were representation uh from multiple partners in our community. Ian Reich from Public Health Attended, Clark McFarland from CMHA. Um, Allison Govear from Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy and Sandra McClay-Winters, a paramedic services member, but also a member of the Peer Advisory Committee. Um, uh, the presentation has been included with this report uh for your reference. Um, and a lot of information has been shared, uh, and certainly again today uh is primary in our discussions. As to what's happening in our community, I would like to welcome Allison Govear to uh County Council today as well. Uh, the information that's contained in this report is a combination of work between myself and herself. Her being the expert and me being the connection to Gray County. So um, there's a lot of information contained and I'll do uh, I'll I'll do my best to highlight. But I just wanted to make sure you are aware that if if there are questions, if there's some information that needs to be parlayed, uh, we have Allison here. Um, uh, as a resident expert to assist us, okay? So this report um is uh, we're asking for you to receive it as well as to endorse the identified calls to action. Um, and so through that, through the calls to action, there are basically three different levels of activity we are asking uh support with. And they're um on the ground or local efforts that we can be making and are making. Um, I'll be highlighting some of those. Uh, provincial advocacy and then of course federal advocacy and those um are for policy changes, regulatory changes. Uh, things that we don't have uh the ability to affect locally, but definitely can impact and change at a at another level. And bring those changes back home to us. Um, and so uh what I would move to is the background on um the discussion that we're about to have. Um, and so uh you've known that trends in our opioid related deaths and our local responses uh are. Um, they've been fairly high profile and and very unfortunate in our communities and I and I've heard uh loudly and clearly even just today, uh Mayor Columbus speak to. Impacts uh and and um uh things that are happening in and surely uh Mayor Kivney or sorry. Uh, Counselor Kivney speak to what's happened in me for just recently in the last week and it's it's so very unfortunate and we're hearing this is a a trend and. We are looking to ways and means to affect that trend in our region as well as to make some changes. Um, going forward, so eight calls to action were brought forward. We have nine. Uh, we have an additional one uh included in this report today. Um, so I'll work through those. Um, we know that there are interventions that can prevent fatal drug poisonings. They are available here in Gray and Bruce Counties. They're certainly available to our residents in Gray County. They include supervised consumption sites, opioid agonist therapy, um safe supply programs and and mobile harm reduction programs. The challenge is that they're not available to all of our residents and we are recommending that we try and find ways to take this out. And make sure that all residents in need of services can have access. Um, they're not, again, as I've mentioned, universally available. Um, one of the wonderful outcomes this past summer has been the SOS, uh, which is the Supportive Outreach Service. Um, led uh primarily by our paramedic services uh colleagues. Um, but it's a a coordinated response of service providers and we're seeing good outcomes there and I won't speak to those in particular. But suffice it to say, um, we're hopeful that we can expand the amount of time, um, the efforts and the locations of where that pilot project will go in the future. We also know that there are plenty of other opportunities for naloxone distribution. Um, the needle syringe uh exchange program, all of these community based programs that are available. We'd like to enhance where they're available and how to meet those needs and and how to move it further. So the partners at Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy would be working with community partners to take that to an another level, to be able to provide deeper level of service. Um, our second call to action was accessing the need for internal harm reduction education and identifying opportunities to incorporate. Harm reduction into our current policies and practices. At a number of our agencies and a number of our locations, we do have access uh to this kind of training, but we know that it further uh training is is necessary. Um, will we note that um social programs that bring staff in contact with people who use drugs? And who may be at risk of fatal overdose do need further training. They need the ability to be able, they already have contact with people in need of services. And to provide them with the additional enhanced uh capacity and training is is uh something that we're recommending that needs to happen soon, very soon. Um, so offering training to all staff um on the basic approaches to harm reduction. Regardless of whether you are actually working in harm reduction or not, whether or not you're working in addiction services. We have lots to offer to staff who interact with people who are in need. Um, and certainly we can develop uh policies uh for drug use on um county operated sites. Those are pieces that we we need to have conversations about, of course. But there there are a number of recommendations contained within this uh particular. Um, idea where we could develop and implement overdose prevention response plans, uh certainly at our uh local housing units. Uh, and various sites where people do interact with our staff. Um, and we know that there is um an opportunity for us to enhance the the service that we can provide for grief and loss. Um, there is peer support, a lot of great work happening um in those uh in those areas. And we've a lot to learn from people who are experiencing firsthand. What it's like to be either a person with addictions or mental health or a family member. And we um intend to take those uh opportunities of learning to others so that we can have a a deeper response again. We have um an opportunity to advocate to our provincial leadership. So this is about the policy changes. These are bigger overarching uh opportunities for us to really reflect on something that'll change here in the province that we can bring back locally. Um, and so we know we've done this many times. Uh, our politicians have been very uh responsive to our needs and taken information as recently as earlier this week. Shared back uh the delegations and and information as to what will help us here. And that's so very appreciated. And we know that we have an opportunity and avenue to do the same in this uh in this sector and and to affect change. So we've got some strategies listed uh with regard to what it is we think we could make changes on. Um, and they include um several pieces uh from our report, our white paper. Um, again, there are lots of details that I didn't include in the report, but we have access to those resources and I believe they're linked at the end of this document. Um, the AMO report does indicate that they want to take an all of government effort to develop a comprehensive drug uh provincial drug strategy. We really endorse that piece at the Community Drug and Alcohol Strategy locally. Um, because it's an op opioid overdose emergency. Uh, we don't need to go back through that. We all know that piece. We called it, I heard it earlier spoken to as an epidemic. Um, or the other pandemic that we've been um unfortunately experiencing. So we see that um there are a number of drug strategy networks across the province. Um, and if we can uh enhance the linkages, um, we can find a most uh comprehensive. Uh, funded drug strategy that will help all of our uh dedicated local coordinators. Uh, we that's that's a further strength and and that's recommended, uh, as I mentioned through the AMO uh document from twenty nineteen. Number five, uh, the uh call to action is the new one, and this is the safer supply initiative. Uh, that will significantly improve individual health, transitioning from the toxic drugs that they're using that are unregulated. To a healthcare context. And I think that's the piece that um I can so very much value and appreciate locally. Where we're go where we're coming from. We know that if there's a safer supply, it offers participants case management, access to um healthcare services. Uh, uh, a primary care um connection that they're they're not accessing right now. And these health initiatives already we know have demonstrated high client retention rates, significant reduction in overdose fatalities. And they create a pathway to that healthcare that I that is so very important. We move on to the federal leadership that we're looking for and the advocacy that uh would take us through policy and regulatory changes, but it's at the federal level, of course. Recognizing the challenges are national for us. This isn't regional or local. Um, the we the call to action for number six is the Federal Minister of Health declared drug poisoning crisis a national public health emergency. We're not alone in this. We know that already British Columbia has declared this. And there are steps we can take to follow in how they moved forward. Number seven, the federal government urgently adopt a comprehensive Pan-Canadian Action Plan that addresses the factors that both contribute to harmful substance use. And that obstruct any recovery. And they include inadequate housing, social safety nets. We know it goes right back to the social determinants of health. How do we ensure that uh we look at this as a cross uh sector opportunity? And uh it it again takes the village. We have uh another one, number eight, which is the Federal Minister of Health decriminalize the possession of all drugs for personal use. Um, and scale up prevention, harm reduction and treatment services. There's been some significant work done in this area, but not enough yet to allow for people to feel. That they aren't stigmatized, that they won't be in trouble if they come forward and call for assistance. So we're looking for um some decriminalization language. And then finally, the Federal Minister of Health um and Regulatory Colleges support and fund the provision of safe supply initiatives. So that in a nutshell, um includes the information that was provided back in July. Um, but you can see that we've already moved on some of these. We are continuing our work um collaboratively with our partners. Uh, it was expedited, as you know, due to COVID outbreaks in specific areas, including Hanover Locations, Owen Sound Locations. It called for a multidisciplinary response and we stepped up. So you've got some great examples of where we've already had some positive impact, but we know we've got a lot more to do. I'll turn this back to you, Mr. Warden. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barb. Two things. One, you mentioned Allison being present, but I don't see her in my list of attendees. Madam Clerk, is she here? But I just don't see her.
She is here um in the attendees, but we can certainly bring um Allison in.
Okay, great. And number two, Barb, I'm sorry, I'm dominating here, but uh. This call to action, is this not the uh the same call to action that we had supported previously?
The call to action that we had support previously is exactly this. We are now putting it into action. Me, I think the tie for me is that this is. Connected to the work that you are asking council to do and that will be directly related to the task force that has been uh. Spoke spoken to earlier this morning. I think there are some things that can move quickly through a a body that is ready and willing to make some decisions. And then there are some other um items that take a little bit more work and uh further advocacy.
Thank you. And Allison, I do see you showing up on my list. Thank you very much. Um, so council question, starting with uh Counselors, so ever.
Yes, and and thank you for that presentation. Certainly, these are very important initiatives. Now, um, my question is. How how is this gonna relate to the task force that we were asking for terms of reference from and the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan? And also with regards to funding. Now, the funding for the province, um, you know, I think a lot of municipalities are. Are are lobbying the province for funding for their community safety and wellbeing plans. So how are we gonna integrate this with these other two initiatives? So we don't end up duplicating work and funding applications. So, you know, we go to the province and the province as well as this part of your community safety and wellbeing plan. Because I I don't see anywhere in the report the words community safety and wellbeing plan. So. I'm just concerned that, you know, it's great that we all wanna address these initiatives and move forward. But when it comes to funding, I think, you know, we need to make sure that there is coordination. So that when we go to the province, we can say, yes, this is part of the community safety wellbeing plan, because that was their initiative. To have communities do that and they'd be more likely to fund that than than other separate initiatives. So that's just my my own thought. Um, but um, yeah, how how are we gonna coordinate this with the um community safety and wellbeing plan is the question.
Thank you for that question through you, Mr. Mr. Warden. Um, the we uh know that this is the correct action table, the Community Drug and Alcohol Table. The strategy network to be able to uh take that priority from community safety and wellbeing and connect the dots. Um, the community safety and wellbeing uh plan is the overall infrastructure that will support the drug and alcohol strategy to move forward. Uh, suffice it to say, no one has time to duplicate efforts and I can very much appreciate that comment. Um, it would be done um in tandem and leverage the work that's being done at the Drug and Alcohol Strategy. If there are connections, as I heard earlier, that there are potential sources of funding. Then once it's identified uh what the activity is, we could funnel that back through community safety and wellbeing to Soul Gen. If that's where that opportunity comes from, if it comes from a Ministry of Health lens, then we would work through that lens. Uh, there the opportunity here, though, is. There the opportunity here, though, is that someone like the coordinator, Alison, would be part of the task force or at least an advisory body to the task force that was talked about this morning. And Alison also sits at Community Safety and Wellbeing as an advisory committee member. So there are all of those connect connective pieces. But this lens is specific to the those pillars of mental health and addictions. And so the other piece that we're fortunate to have is the connection to the provincial body of Drug and Alcohol Strategy Coordinators. So access, early access to information that's coming from the province, a coordinated body to be able to leverage what's happening and and really start to to build on good work and good outcomes that are taking place. We're not in this alone. So we will be, coordination is is the word I would use all around because no one can do this alone.
Thank you.
I'm muted. Yes, you're good, Counselor Soever.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Mellon, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Barb, for that report. As you indicated, there's a tremendous amount of information in there and a lot of a lot of good, good information. My question revolves around your point number five and eight in regards to safe supply or safer supply initiatives. The provincial government has done a lot of work similar to that with the with marijuana policies. And I'm wondering, is that sort of a model that you're thinking of following there? Is that or is that is there some? Is there some learning from that process that could be put into this to make sure that, you know, some of the issues that have come up around the decriminalization of marijuana has has run into? Is it is are are those things that, I don't know whether I'm phrasing this question right or not, but it's very complex, as we all know. But I'm I'm wondering, is there some points that we can learn from the marijuana journey for this particular project?
I can take that question if you'd like, Barb.
I was just gonna pass it off. Thank you so much.
It would be a different approach with safe supply of opiates. It wouldn't be a commercial approach, which has been taken with cannabis. The regulatory framework would lie within the healthcare system. So the goal would be to connect folks with a primary care physician or an NP and wraparound supports through the mechanism of a safer supply of of opioids. So the touch point would be a low barrier clinical community based setting rather than a storefront where you can go and and pick and choose and and pay for your products for recreational use. Does that answer your question?
It does, and and I'm reassured to hear your answer. So thank you very much.
I do not see any other.
Counselor Body?
I'm sorry, yes, I kept your name down here, too. My apologies, Counselor Body, you're on.
Thank you very much. Probably a question for Alison or or Barb, but probably Alison. Safe supply is one thing, safe injection sites is just a little bit off. But so important, and I'm I'm wondering, did the safe sites? Had long talks with our our police chief, Craig Ambrose, that's had experience in KW before he came up here at this type of thing. And you know, before you get into decriminalization, just having a safe site that is run by government healthcare people that one that's it's safe supply that keeps people alive. We can't get people off drugs if they're dead. You know, we got to keep people alive first, and we've got to get them safe supplies to get rid of the the toxic stuff and to build those relationships with them. And, you know, something like the methadone treatment center isn't is a model I don't think is working quite the way it could be if we had safe injection sites with safe supply and started to build those relationships with these people and get them through the door and get a start. But last I heard, the province wasn't allowing safe injection sites in Ontario. Is that still accurate?
There's currently a cap on the number of safe injection sites that can exist in Ontario. So sorry, was the question around the safe injection sites or the safe supply?
Well, I I think the safe injection site is a kind of an important part of the safe. Well, I think that's how you get it there, but you can come in on both of those, actually.
Sure. So with the safe injection sites, there is a cap of 21 sites that are allowed to exist in the in the province. So that goes back to what Barb was mentioning around universal availability of life-saving interventions. If we're tapping them at 21, we're not really allowing each community the opportunity to even offer that service. And I would encourage folks to to speak with your colleagues at the provincial level or your colleagues who work in this policy area to understand why that cap is there. We have, as the Drug Strategy Coordinators Network, we have written to the minister to ask them to remove that cap in order to allow for universal, I guess, scaling up of that life-saving intervention. It is an evidence-based intervention which has shown to save lives. So that is one piece of it. Directly related to the safe injection sites is in order to apply to the government to have that exemption in our community to establish a safe injection site, we would first need to do a consultation with community members. And that would need that the results of that consultation would need to be part of an application to the government. So that would be the first place we would start as a community. And it may end up that in this in a rural community like ours, a bricks and mortar, one location for a safe injection site to cover all of the geography of, you know, Owen Sound or Gray County or Gray and Bruce County won't necessarily create the outcome and the impact that it would in a dense urban population like in Toronto. So we might need to be looking at more innovative rural approaches. And that's where it kind of jumps back over to the safe supply. So the safe supply can be administered through family physicians and NPs in many different healthcare settings. So it wouldn't need to be this one bricks and mortar place for people to go. And if you're getting a safe supply, which is a known dose of a regulated drug from a healthcare provider, then you don't need a safe injection site. Because you know that what you have is not going to cause a fatal overdose. We have a lot of work to do in this regard. Absolutely. I'd say that community consultation piece is probably our first step to understand what we need and where we need it.
It's great. Thank you very much for helping me understand it. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Alison, I wasn't aware of the 21-site cap. What what's the reasoning behind that? Is that funding? And the other part of my question is, is the federal government involved in any of this at all?
Um, I might have, so I'll, I might need to defer to my colleagues at Public Health just to answer that question accurately. Unfortunately, we don't have anyone from Public Health here today. So I I will follow up with them. But I I honestly, I do not know why the cap is there at the provincial level. It could have something, my best guess is that these types of interventions are still fairly new. You know, within the last five years. And so if the government were to not have any kind of regulation around how many can be put up in each community and across the province, there was a lot of perhaps uncertainty about what would happen if suddenly there was a safe injection site on every corner. Because the model hadn't been like fully investigated and researched in terms of like scaling it up quickly. So I would imagine that that's why the cap was originally set. But since the crisis has escalated so quickly in such a short period of time, it's important that our research and our evidence keeps up and our policies keep up. And I think that that's what we're seeing is is that this this cap wasn't intended to be detrimental. But if if the policies aren't adjusted as the context adjusts, then it will and it it does end up being detrimental.
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. I don't think I see any other, oh, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank both Barb and Alison for their continued work with regards to the drug and alcohol strategy. We're, you know, we're making headway here, even though sometimes it feels like we're spinning our wheels. Headway is being made, and certainly Alison, as our coordinator, has been able to rally all the troops from the very, you know, the different sectors within Gray County to to bring forth a strategy. I really like number four, and I, you know, I hope that the province really hasn't stuffed up, you know, in providing any local, you know, money to to keep coordinators going. And, you know, with any with any luck, the province will recognize how important this this work is to be done locally. So I really like to see number four, and hopefully, like right now, Gray County commits 20,000, I believe is the accurate number, and in Bruce County. That doesn't go very far in trying to keep a drug and alcohol strategy going. So we had some legacy money that we've been able to continue on with to keep things going. But there may be a request, you know, up the road of county council if the province doesn't step up, you know, in the future. But, you know, the work that Alison and Barb are doing is, you know, critically critically important, and I certainly appreciate that. Just to follow up on Counselor Body around safe supply. Alison, has there been any mobile units that that you're aware of throughout the provinces? Northern Ontario looked at mobile units. Is that something that, yeah, could be looked into?
I think that that would be a great place to start in terms of meeting the needs of our demographic and our geographic region. I am aware of mobile safe injection interventions that have that are underway in DC. But in terms of mobile safe supply, that's something that I would absolutely be interested in looking further into, especially, yeah, northern communities. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that like Timmins, Thunder Bay. There are some areas that are doing some really innovative work in the northern communities. So we can certainly take a look, but I don't have the answer for you right now.
Good, Counselor Mackey? Excellent.
Yes, thank you.
And I will just maybe do a reach out to Counselor Desai. I don't know if there's anything he wanted to add to all this. I didn't see his hand up. I don't want to put you under pressure, but is there anything you want to add to this?
No, thank you, or next. I have nothing to add to this.
Very good. Okay, I think we're ready to call the question on the motion before you. Is there anyone opposed? Let's see, none. That is carried. Thank you very much, Barb, and thank you very much, Alison.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, County Council.
Okay, we're gonna go back now to the poll items. First, I am six B, which is the quarterly purchasing report. Just to put it on the table, perhaps I could have it moved by Counselors Soever. Is that okay?
Yes.
And seconded by Counselor Mellon. Okay, Counselor Soever, go right ahead.
Yes, um, this is a report, the information report on on purchases that have been made. And as I mentioned last meeting, I expressed my concern on the tandem trucks that we we only had one qualifying bid. And here we we have one or two bids. And, you know, typically, you know, it would be ideal to have more bids. So, you know, is staff concerned about the low number of bids? Because, you know, two of the three items here came back substantially over budget, particularly the first floor sprinkler at Rockwood Terrace, which was 45% over budget and only one bid. So are we concerned that, given the low number of bids, perhaps bidders know that we're we have low numbers of bids? And, you know, might be taking advantage? And is there something we can do? The second question I have particularly with relates to the backhoe purchase is, are we using LAS, AML's municipal buying group for capital purchases? I know Clearview Township takes advantage of the service offered by AML and, you know, takes advantage of, you know, the procurement policy that LAS has. And and this might be a way to increase the number of bids.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will, I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Finance, I think, if if Mike Alguire is available. But certainly with regard to the sprinkler renovation at Rockwood Terrace, the people that are a part of the Committee of Management would be very familiar with this project because I think we've discussed it a number of times. This is a very, it's a difficult project, a time-consuming project. And I actually want to give credit to the purchasing folks who worked really hard with this vendor to get them to come to the table and undertake this work, which is required to be completed under legislation, which is why we're moving forward with it. With regard to the trucks and the backhoe and that, I think perhaps purchasing or Mary Lou could provide some additional background for council. I think you must be seeing this in your own municipalities as well. It's very challenging right now to get equipment purchased and and get it delivered in a timely fashion or get it delivered at all. So I don't know, Mary Lou, do you there or is, oh, there's Mike. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, thank you very much. And Counselor Soever, absolutely, yes, we are concerned. We're, I think we're in the same state that many municipalities and even even individual homeowners are experiencing right now. It's very difficult to find folks to bid on work. This, the the sprinkler project in particular has gone out a couple of times. And unfortunately, it does go out publicly, it goes to hundreds of of companies through a shotgun blast on our online platform. But unfortunately, we're not getting a lot of uptake or as far as interest in that project. So yeah, we're we're concerned, we're trying our best to get our our information out there to to the bidding community. Part two of your question, LAS, we have visited many different group purchasing opportunities. That is one that maybe we can have another look at. We've we've looked at it once. We didn't think it was a good fit for us, but perhaps we need to reinvent, re-look at it. I'm I'm not sure, so.
Yes, just to follow up, Mr. Warden. Yes, that would be a good idea. Maybe the Clearview Township just recently bought a whole bunch of stuff using LAS. So it might be worth checking with them to see what their experience is. And one of them was a backhoe, so it's, it costs a bit more than our backhoe, so maybe we did better. Or maybe theirs is bigger. But I mean, you know, it'd be worth looking at their recent pricing. They just put out a press release, so or it's in a, it's in a, sorry, it's in a report on their council. So I I can send you the link and it might be, you know, just a good comparison of, you know, how well they did with LAS versus what what we're doing.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Body.
Thank you very much. Just following Larry's comments, you know, if you drive past a car parking lot right now, I know I don't do
If you drive past a car parking lot right now, an auto dealership, they're empty. And they're having trouble getting parts, having trouble getting chips and all kinds of things because of COVID. I wonder if that's partly what we're running into with purchasing and if there would be any utility in. Using a bit of duct tape to keep these things running for an extra year instead of buying, you're putting it off until the supply comes back up. If we'll get a better prices and get a better selection. I I wonder if it's COVID related and I don't know. Whether you put your, put any thought to that or if it's something we should put thought to. So that's just a comment. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, well, yeah, there are other vehicles that we're trying to. Procure right now that we're in the middle of deciding whether or not we need to. To use your term, put a Band-Aid on it and try and make them last a little longer until the inventory comes up and we can get. Hopefully better pricing as things stabilize. We are considering that.
And council, so ever.
Oh, sorry, my hands, that's a gold stand.
Okay. No worries. And I don't think I see any other hands, do I? Fire mosquito or something bugging me. All right. So with that said, I think it's time to call the question on the motion before us. Is there anyone opposed? And seeing no hands, that is carried. Thank you very much. We'll turn next to item six C. Which is the Affordable Housing Task Force minutes that were dated January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Would it be okay to say moved by Deputy Warden McQueen? You're the chair of that body and seconded by. Council Brody. Council celebrity, you have the floor.
You are muted, councillor, so ever.
Yes, unfortunately, I was able to attend that meeting, but but I wanted to pull this. Because at the meeting, we we was a presentation on our official plan amendment. And this is the Affordable Housing Task Force, and we've been doing quite a bit of work on our official plan here as well. And so one of the things that has come up is, you know, we we just put a lot of money toward affordable housing, but are we doing? What we can in our official plan because the provincial, we always hear about these developments and say. You know, they're, they don't really have a lot of attainable or affordable housing in them. And, you know, we we got reports that says, well, they conform to the provincial policy statement. But, you know, in dealing with, you know, attainable housing, both here and at the county level. In reading the provincial policy statement, it says. Planning authorities shall, that's the shall, provide for an appropriate range and mix of housing options and densities to meet. Projected market based and affordable housing needs of current and future residents by. Of the regional market area by a establishing and implementing minimum targets. For the provision of housing which is affordable to low and moderate income households. So I know with the attainable housing, the Affordable Housing Task Force, we are. Dealing with trying to clear the county's list. But the moderate income individuals, which we're trying to address here in the Blue Mountains as well. You know, it says we should have. A target and we should implement something. So I'm just wondering as. I did send Randy this question this morning so he could be prepared. Is do we have a target as is suggested we should have by the provincial policy statement? And, you know, should we not be putting in some rules to implement it? We are throwing a lot of money at this problem, both here at the local level and at the county level. But is there something we we should be doing because, you know, I asked our planning director here. And in our official plan, we don't have a target. I said, well. You know, why don't we just say that we want twenty percent of homes that are built? To be, you know, under a certain price point because. It says we're supposed to establish and implement minimum targets for the provision of that housing, which is affordable. And that's straight in the provincial policy statement. So I'm just wondering if Randy has some, can tell us, do we have a target at the county level?
Randy?
Thank you and and through you, Mr. Warden. We do have a target that we've identified in the county official plan. That was done through recolor gray that was approved by the province in two thousand nineteen, so just over two years ago. As part of that, that work is to move forward with working with local municipalities on trying to identify. Those targets obviously within their local official plans as well as incorporating zoning provisions to encourage that target. The target that was set by council through the recolor gray is. Is is working towards achieving a minimum of thirty percent of of all new housing to be at affordable and. Just to clarify in terms of the affordable definitions that relates to the the. Official plan, which is consistent with the provincial policy statement definition. So for affordable housing ownership, that's, we're talking about the least expensive of. Either housing where the purchase price is at least ten percent below the average purchase price of a resale unit in Gray County. Or the annual housing expenses do not exceed thirty percent of the gross household income. So there's, council service correct in terms of the Affordable Housing Task Force has been focusing on, you know, the, trying to. Increase the number of houses for those that are experiencing an income of thirty thousand and less. What we've also discussed is that in order to achieve that, most new builds are achieving a mixture of. What we call affordable and more of those attainable housing units in order to make the project viable. So when we're talking about the definitions as it relates to the provincial policy for affordability. It's the. It in also includes some of that middle income in terms of those components. And like I said, the details that are to be worked out through local official plan documents and zoning documents. I know, for example, the town is. Just starting a process of their official plan review. So that's something that we'll be working with town staff and town council. To incorporate what the minimum target that we've identified in the county official plan. And how we can try to create a policy environment that then encourages. To be able to meet some of those targets. And, you know, with that, we've also through the housing action plan that was created by the Affordable Housing Task Force. They've created a number of different incentive programs and initiatives that. Staff have either implemented or we're working on implementation. One, for example, is our community improvement plan project. Where we offer up incentives both now at the local municipal level, once the C I Ps are approved and in place. And we also offer those incentives in partnership with local municipalities, the county level to encourage things like more affordable and attainable housing. So that's just one example of many that we're working on to try to. Work with local municipalities to achieve that minimum target that's been identified in our official plan. And as we, as local municipalities do their updates to local official plan documents and zoning documents. That's when the the details are put in place to try to address how we're going to achieve those minimum targets through each local municipality. So I hope that answers, answers that question.
Good, council, so ever.
Yes, thank you, Randy, for that answer and, you know, it's interesting, thirty percent. Well, we're right now at zero percent new developments meeting those in the Blue Mountains, so. I'm hoping we can do something to implement it and I, the the community improvement plans are a great idea. But they need to be funded by the taxpayers in general, so I'm hoping that we just establish a quota. Of that thirty percent for every development and if a developer chooses not to build those. Attainable units, then they can contribute, say, a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars to our. To our. Community improvement plan because really when you think about it on a twenty. On a twenty development, twenty unit development basis, they need six units. So if it's a hundred thousand, that's six hundred thousand spread over twenty houses. Which is thirty thousand dollars a house. So when you think about a one point five million dollar house. You know, it's two percent, right? And. People are happy to pay a six percent real estate commission, so. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but certainly, you know, the problem with community improvement plans are they're great ideas. But if you get a lot of uptake on them, somebody has to make up those missing development charges and 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 the funding and we have to fund them on the general tax base. So, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, maybe there is a way that we can do to implement it because clearly. We've established a target, but now we haven't done the implementation, which is suggested in the. Provincial policy statement yet.
Go ahead, Randy.
If I might add further to that, you know, I think, I think what council whoever is indicating is, is, you know. Requiring a minimum target, which, you know, is, would be achievable through what we would call inclusionary zoning. And unfortunately, through some recent changes of the Planning Act, a lot of the inclusionary zoning measures. Either have to be a prescribed municipality in order to implement or it's very focused in terms of what can be utilized when it comes to inclusionary zoning. And that, when I talk about inclusionary zoning, that's where. Municipality can pass an inclusionary zoning bylaw that essentially. Outlines that at for every new development, a certain percent of that of those housing units that are built have to meet a certain. Have to meet that affordable housing target. But as I mentioned, based on some recent changes to the, to the Planning Act. These are only in areas that can be applied. In a protected major transit station area or an area subject to a development permit system. And even once that's in place, there's only certain developments that could be. Could qualify where you could include an inclusionary zoning or a percent of those units and includes development that contains fewer than. Not, so any developments that are less than ten residential units, you can't apply it. Development that's proposed by nonprofit housing provider in partnership with the nonprofit housing provider. So there's, there's certain exemptions that you can and cannot apply even once you have those provisions in place, so it's, it's very. Prescriptive in terms of under the Planning Act and to. Require a certain percent of those housing units to be affordable. And so that's why we've. Utilizing the tools that we have in our, in our toolkit that we have available to us collectively are things like incentive programs. Through C I P programs or through looking at opportunities where if we have surplus lands, which is the the current project we're working on. Is is to look at how we can utilize those surplus lands to encourage more affordable housing or working with our non-housing. Nonprofit housing providers in order to move forward with projects in order to increase both affordable and attainable housing in our communities. So that's, that's the, unfortunately, we only have the tools that we can work with and we just don't have that. Tool in our tool belt where we could actually require a percent of of units be affordable in each new development.
Good, council, so ever.
Yes, so what you're saying is we don't have the tool to implement achieving those targets and.
So that's where, again, we've, we're, we've set a minimum target and we're hoping to be able to work with local municipalities in terms of. Identifying through official plans and zoning bylaws of looking at increasing densities. Looking at increasing height of buildings, looking at opportunities to increase the types of housing uses within our zoning bylaws. For example, if a zoning bylaw has only permits a single and semi attached units, can we increase that to also include townhouses and apartment dwelling units? As a permitted use. So that's, that's the tools in our tool belts that we can utilize to try to encourage the types of housing. To be able to try to meet some of these minimum targets. But again, we don't have a tool in our tool belt to require that every new development have an X percent. Of of their units being, meeting that affordable housing. So we are trying to use incentive programs and make sure our our planning documents are up to date. In order to set the environment, at least to be able to encourage this type of development.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from anyone? Not see any other hands and if that's the case, and it's time to call the question on the motion before you. Is there anyone opposed? No hands, I'm gonna say that is carried. We're gonna move next to a German, but before I do, councillor Carlton, I love the art behind you. Is it yours?
No, no, that was a gift.
Very nice. Okay. Madam C A, C L.
Just before we go today, as you're all aware, the province is moving into its next phase of reopening as of Monday. So as the the staff team here has discussed. We are going to, our intention is to move back to appointments in the building and having staff at front counter service here. Because right now the building is is completely closed to the public, so we'll move back into that, but I I wanted to. Get a feel for your preferences with regard to council meetings. I think during this next phase, we'll keep the committees as virtual. But when it comes to council and committee of the whole, we have the ability, the technology set up to be able to offer hybrid. So that people can participate remotely as well as having people in chambers. But again, I wanted to to get a sense from you what your preference would be. Do you want to continue on entirely virtually for a couple more weeks and then revisit this and. Or, you know, I'm looking at what the advice that we're getting from the provincial science table saying, you know. Our ICU numbers will kind of work their way through the the system during the month of February, so I don't want to be. Aggressive or put anybody at risk, but I didn't want to have the conversation and I'm interested in what you would like to do.
Very good. We have council design, council millen, I guarantee, and they're gonna have opposite things to say.
Now, I I I do think that's one of the few things councillor Millen and I agree on. But I could be wrong. I've been wrong before. I'm, I, I think everyone knows I'm going to say I'd love to be back in person. When initially, when we were back in person, we, we had a policy requirement that everyone who is coming or attending in person. Would be required to show proof of being fully vaccinated and. I'm trying to think, I think it was the very first meeting that we were back in person. That we had a hundred percent attendance in person. At this point, I'm assuming. Most of us, if not all of us, have had the booster shot as well. I do understand the the C A O's point of not wanting to put anyone around the table at risk, but. As she said herself, we have the technology to to have hybrid meetings. Personally, I I'd like to get back in chambers. I I feel it it leads to a better. I don't want to say a better experience, but I I always have a. I always feel the meetings are a lot better when we're in person and we're we're able to see each other face to face. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'm very happy to, two weeks from now, to be up there, knowing sound. In the chambers. Thank you, Warden. Thanks.
Thank you, council, well.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and strangely enough. Not necessarily in agreement with Mr. Desai. I'm just wondering, I'm trying to remember when the the province is suggesting that we go back to. Is it phase one or three, which whatever direction they go? So that things would open up even further. Is it the first of March? I believe that that. I mean, if all things being equal, that changes again.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so in my mind, two things. Number one, let's not push the envelope more than we have to. And number two, it is February in Gray County. I'm not as big a fan as I used to be about driving in snow that I can't see more than a couple of feet in front of me. I'm just as happy to be here at home where I'm warm, I'm safe, and everyone else is warm and safe where they want to be. I'm just as happy to be here at home where I'm warm, I'm safe, and everyone else is warm and safe where they want to be. So I'd be inclined to hold off for in-person meetings until the first of March, thank you.
Also, board ignore.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you, and I tend to agree with councillor Millen, based on provincial policy. You're looking at a minimum of twenty-one to twenty-eight days past the January thirty-first date. And the January thirty-first date for the public is still at fifty percent recommendations through restaurants and public settings as well. So I think, I think, you know, you see full attendance today, I think, being through a council and Mr. Millen's point about snow in Gray County through February, I, I think it may be prudent just for, just for another, at least twenty-one to twenty-eight days to, to continue on the work that we're doing.
Thank you for that, and I see a bunch of bobbing heads as you spoke. Councillor Mackey, you had your hand up.
Well, after sixty-one years, I'm certainly accustomed to driving in the snow in February in Gray County, so that doesn't bother me whatsoever. I agree with councillor DeSai. I really miss being in person and it would certainly be my preference to get back in person as quickly as possible. We do have the option of the hybrid. Participated in a hybrid, though, I'm not a big fan of it. It doesn't work that well when the, the majority of your colleagues are sitting in chambers and you're not there, so it is difficult from my one experience with it, but my, my vote would be to get back in person. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor DeSai.
Thank you, Warden, thanks. I'm surprised councillor Millen is objecting to this. No, I've, I've been led to believe he's walked uphill both ways to school in more snow than what we get these days.
Couldn't resist, could you? All right.
True story.
Councillor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I personally prefer to go back to council chambers. I don't know if anyone knows, most generally, any meeting I attend, I have a doors and blocks plaque behind my head. Unfortunately, I, I am in a position where I do not get great internet. And I've tried every way possible to solve the problem. The only way I can do it is to come to our council chambers, and so I'm traveling anyway in the snow and I drive a Jeep, so I have no problem at all with it.
Very good, so madam clerk, I'm hearing about a split. So I'm wondering, oh, councillor there, go ahead.
I'm happy to break the tie, Mr. Warden. I'm ready to go back to the council chambers, down with the Plexigla, off with the masks, and let's carry on. Thank you.
Madam clerk, I think you've had plenty of feedback, so I, I guess there's the option between do we hold off a few more weeks and then go to you know, starting in March first, go back to chamber, or do we have hybrid? Immediately.
Well, we certainly through our procedural bylaw have the option of a hybrid meeting and understanding that some want to be here in person and some want to remain virtual. We want to respect those choices, so the CAO and I will have further discussions after the meeting today, and we will be in touch with council for sure.
Very good, good way to put it. All right, I think that's it. We're ready to return, are we?
A notice of motions.
Oh, my apologies, yes. Do we have any notices about, first of all, other business, any other, other business? And then any notices of motion, councillor DeSai.
Sorry, this was other business section. I'm sure everyone by now has seen that OGR postponed the the conference to April. This was, this was done with the view of having an in-person conference at Good Roads. Neither the board nor staff at Good Roads were too keen on having another virtual conference. While we, we had a decent enough experience last year with the virtual conference, it was something that we felt was cost prohibitive and didn't really didn't really engage the audience as much as an in-person conference does, so keeping that in mind, we, we did postpone it to April with the hopes that by the time we get there, we will be able to have a full-fledged conference in person, and, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other, other business? Councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden, and I just wanted to, I'm not sure what the process is, but councillor O'Leary and myself had an orientation meeting with the Drug and Alcohol Strategy Group, and councillor O'Leary brought up to the, to both Barb and Allison about the councillor Robinson's you know, intent or wish to be on the, the committee, and there were certainly the response back to councillor O'Leary that there was nothing from their, their end that would prevent the county from having an additional member on that committee. So I, I'm not sure you know, where things go from, from there, but from their perspective, if we wish to have an additional member, that would be fine with them.
Very good, and madam CAO, perhaps we could leave that with you and have it come back, or do you want to speak to that now?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have a, I don't think that there's a concern here at all, that we'll check with, with Heather process-wise, but I think otherwise that we could just formalize that direction at our next meeting.
Very good. Well, thank you for volunteering, councillor Robinson.
All right. Thank you very much, it's my pleasure.
Okay, any other, other business? Well, and once, twice, that's gone, so notices of motion now. Do we have any notices of motion? Not see any hands, so we're on to adjournment now officially. So it's moved by councillor Burley and seconded by councillor Hutchison, oh, well, Hutchison is no longer present, right? We need a second for that, councillor Mackey. That we adjourn. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried, thank you very much.